I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman at 7:30 PM. The prayer will be offered by Deputy City Clerk Judith Boylow, and Alderman Jettie will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before I ask the clerk to call a roll, I will reiterate that if anyone wants to remove jackets in this rather muggy auditorium, please feel free to do so. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Alderman Gidge.
Here.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Present.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here, in that jacket.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Melizzi Gola. Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
Fourteen present.
Alderwoman Melizzi Gola contacted me this morning to say she would be unable to attend this evening's meeting. Also present, Mayor James W. Donches and Corporation Counsel Stephen A. Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Mr. President. First, I wanted to mention a few items that are on the agenda and a couple that aren't. On the first page is the paving contract for the major streets in the city, those being Amherst Street, Somerset Parkway, Broad Street, and Kinsley. This is repurposed money from the Broad Street Parkway as a result of some things that occurred with respect to the federal highway. And so, we needed here to comply with a lot of different federal regulations. This is why this contract is coming forward only now, as opposed to earlier in the spring when the contracts regarding all of the city paving was brought to you and you approved it. Once this is approved, we expect to be able to pave and crack seal, which is a small portion of the total, but over 50 miles of streets. This is compared to about five or six miles that we're doing several years ago. And I think if you, especially if you're in the south end where most of the work has been done so far, you will see some, you know, major impact, and they're going to be moving north through the remainder of the season. So, I think we will see some significant improvements in the condition of the streets this year, and of course, we've got a number of years of the paving plan of action to go. Secondly, Mr. President, I wanted to mention the escrows. I won't go through the details of that, but this is the allocation of previously appropriated money. This is unexpended money this year, or this prior year fiscal '18. We're proposing that a number of uses, that this money, unexpended, be put to a number of uses. The main one being the SURF, or the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, which has to do with buying equipment. The budget which we passed a month or two ago didn't put a whole lot of money, I think it was $1 million, to SURF, and this would allocate another million three to SURF and help us to maintain the quality of our fleet. But I assume this will get referred to the Budget Committee, and I will be glad to come and discuss the details of all of this at that time. There are two items related to our major employer, BAE. One would enable the reconfiguration of one of the downtown bus routes to better serve the public in general, and to enable BAE employees to use the public bus to ride from the parking garages here to their facility on Canal Street, as well as the park-and-ride over on Crown Street. So, any BAE or anybody else parking in any of those locations could use this new service to go to BAE or anywhere else in the downtown. I think it'll serve everyone well. BAE has agreed to contribute $260,000 a year to this reconfiguration, so they've been an important partner in this, and we're glad to be working with them to improve service for everyone in the downtown. Also, there's another BAE contract where we would agree to lease spaces in the park-and-ride to BAE for the use of their employees, people who then could use the system, the new reconfigured route to get from the Crown Street park-and-ride to Canal Street. The EPA was in town a few weeks, couple of weeks ago, putting forth their proposals and ideas, taking testimony and thoughts regarding the Mohawk Tannery. They will be meeting with neighbors, people from the neighborhood, this coming Thursday, not two days from now, but a week and two days, nine days from now, in which they will discuss with the neighbors the different alternatives and their thoughts regarding the most cost-effective, in their view, approach towards a Mohawk Tannery cleanup, and will be presenting ideas as to how that could be paid for. Finally, a couple items coming up this week, Mr. President. First, we have the back-to-school item, which is the back-to-school event over at the library. That's on the 23rd in the late afternoon. It's too bad Alderwoman Melizzi Gola is not here, because she has been a very important driving force behind that project for many years, as have George Catis from Nashville Wallpaper and a number of other people, the library, the school department. It's a great event for kids who need school supplies, and we'll see, I'm sure, hundreds of kids and families there on that evening. And finally, Mr. President, I wanted to mention the Designer Show House, which is taking place on Concord Street, at 90 Concord Street. This is a benefit for home health and hospice, which is a worthy cause, of course. But the show house is at the former home, or the mansion really, that's known as the Frank Anderson House, built by major industrialist Frank Anderson back in 1906. He owned many shoe factories at the time, one of the biggest industrialists in the United States and the world in those days. And then, he lived there for a time. Later, it became the home of Mount St. Mary. Recently, has been purchased by Thomas Moore College up in Merrimack, and now, Home Health Hospice, under the auspices of Tina Andrade, has had the entire mansion restored and decorated. It is an incredible bit of Nashville history. It is definitely worth visiting. It does cost $25 to make the visit, but that money goes to home health and hospice. And so, I recommend that everyone take a visit to 90 Concord Street and check out the Frank Anderson Designer Show House. And, Mr. President, that is all I have for this evening.
Any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Recognition period?
There are none.
Reading the minutes of the previous meeting and public hearings. If there are no objections, the minutes of the Board of Alderman meetings of July 10, 2018, and those of the public hearings conducted by the Committee on Infrastructure on July 25, 2018, are accepted, placed on file, and the readings are suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports?
There are none.
Period for public comment. Relative items expected to be acted upon this evening. With one speaker, Chief Lavoy.
Thank you, Chief Lavoy, Nashville Police Department. Due to the temperature in the room, I'll be extremely brief, and I'm here in support of Resolution 055, the contract between the Nashville Patrolmen's Association and the Nashville Police Commission. I certainly believe that this is a tremendously mutually beneficial contract. The patrol and detectives of the Nashville Police Department are the heart and soul of the Nashville Police Department, and certainly, you know, in my completely non-biased opinion, I think their performance is certainly second to none, and I wholeheartedly support, hopefully you'll support, the final passage as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches, relative to contract for 2018 federal paving program, Amherst Street, Route 101A, Somerset Parkway, Broad Street, Route 130, and Kinsley Street, Route 111.
Alderman Jettie?
I move to accept, place on file, and award the contract to Newport Construction Corporation in the amount of $3,987,519.
Motion is to accept the contract, to accept the communication, place it on file, and award the contract to Newport Construction Corporation in the amount of $3,987,519. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Communication from Patricia D. Pietzus, City Clerk, relative to warrant to be committed to Chief of Police for unlicensed dogs.
Alderwoman Karen?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, in accordance with RSA 466-14, commit the warrant to the Chief of Police or his designee for the issuance of civil forfeitures to those dog owners who have not licensed their dogs.
Motion is to accept the communication, to place it on file, and in accordance with RSA 466-14, commit the warrant to the Chief of Police or his designee for the issuance of civil forfeitures to those dog owners who have not licensed their dogs. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Communication from David G. Fredette, Treasurer-Tax Collector, relative to purchase replacement for the Community Outreach Ford Monahome Home Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, CERF.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and concur with the purchase of a 2018 Dodge Promoter van for the Public Health Department.
Motion is to accept, place on file, and concur with the purchase of the 2018 Dodge Promoter van for the Public Health Department. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions?
Petition for a street acceptance, Pine and Central Streets.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to grant the petition for a street acceptance.
Motion is...
Pine and Central.
Motion is to grant the petition for street acceptance. Discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and the petition is granted. Nominations, appointments, and elections?
Appointments by the Mayor Hunt Memorial Building Board. Carolyn Mortodello, 80 Concord Street, Nashville, New Hampshire. Terms to... Sorry. Term to expire December 31, 2019.
If there are no objections, the appointment by the mayor will be accepted as read and referred to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Joint Convention with Woodlawn-Pinewood Cemetery's Board of Trustees.
There are no objections. The Board of Alderman will now meet in joint convention with the Woodlawn-Pinewood Cemetery's Board of Trustees for the purpose of electing three trustees. I will ask for nominations. Mr. Jensen?
Good evening. I'm Niles Jensen. I'm Chairman of the Board of Trustees, Woodlawn-Pinewood Cemetery, and our Board of Trustees nominate Todd Whitney for a term to expire in 2020, Mark Cologne for a term to expire in 2020, and Patricia Benninger for a term to expire in 2021.
Are there any other nominations? If there are no objections, nominations will now be closed. The names of Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, and Patricia Benninger have been placed in nomination. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire.
Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, and Patricia Benninger.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, Patricia Benninger.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, and Patricia Benninger.
Alderman Cle.
Yes, Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, and Patricia Benninger.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes, Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, and Patricia Benninger, and Alderman Laws is to my left.
Alderman Laws.
Yes. Should've taken your jacket off. Todd Whitney, Mark Malone, and Patricia Benninger.
Alderman Karen?
Yes, Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, and Patricia Benninger.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes, Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, and Patricia Benninger.
Alderman Jettie?
Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, Patricia Benninger.
Alderman Tenza?
Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, and Patricia Benninger.
Alderman Schmidt?
Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, and Patricia Benninger, yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, and Patricia Benninger.
Alderman McCarthy?
Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, and Patricia Benninger.
Trustee Uponovich. Trustee Booslovich.
Patricia Benninger, Mark Cologne, and Patricia.
Trustee Dana Farwell.
Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, Patricia Benninger.
Trustee Charles Farwell Jr. Trustee Frazal. Trustee Jensen.
Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, Patricia Benninger.
Trustee McGlaughlin. Trustee Whitmore. Mayor Donches.
Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, and Patricia Benninger.
We have 18 votes for Todd Whitney, 18 votes for Mark Columbine, and 18 votes for Patricia Benninger.
Todd Whitney, Mark Cologne, and Patricia Benninger are duly appointed to the Woodlawn-Pinewood Cemetery's Board of Trustees for the aforementioned terms. Are any or all of those persons present? Please come forward for the oath of office. Reports of committees, if there are no objections, the report of the Budget Review Committee of July 23, 2018, is accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Finance Committee of August 1, 2018, is accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Human Affairs Committee of July 30, 2018, is accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Committee on Infrastructure of July 25, 2018, is accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the Penachuck Water Special Committee of July 24, 2018, is accepted and placed on file. And if there are no objections, the report of the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee of August 6, 2018, is accepted and placed on file. Lastly, if there are no objections, the report of the Substandard Living Conditions Special Committee of July 12, 2018, is accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of Resolution 18-052, relative to amending the fiscal year 2018 Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan by amending Nashville's soup kitchen and shelters' use of funds.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Thank you. I move for final passage of Resolution 1852.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 1852. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 1852 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-053, establishing an expendable trust fund to accept donations for city events.
Alderman Gidge?
Final passage for R. 18053.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1853. Is there any discussion? Alderman Jettie?
Just for clarification, I looked at the minutes of the Budget Review Committee, and I didn't see any explanation. Could the mayor provide, tell us what this is about and what this is for?
Mayor Donches?
Yes, Mr. President. The idea, I think, arose out of the Pride Parade particularly, because in that event, which went very well, the money coming in actually exceeded the cost of the event. So, the money coming in, the sponsorship and other income that was derived from it, was used to pay the expenses, and then there's money left over. So, the thought was, in that instance and possibly in others, it would be worthwhile to preserve that money, use it for future city events, as opposed to just, you know, putting a couple thousand dollars into the general fund, and this way, we can help keep events going without having to put forward, you know, any funds.
Okay.
Alderman Jettie?
So, this has nothing to do with the Performing Arts Center yet? We haven't started that yet?
No, this is not Performing Arts Center-related.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 1853 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-054, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Education and the Nashville Association of School Principals from July 1, 2018, through July 30, 2022, and authorizing relative transfers.
Alderman Dowd?
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18054.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1854. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and R. 1854 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-055, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Police Commissioners and the Nashville Police Patrolmen's Association from July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2022, and authorizing relative transfers.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Thank you. I move for final passage of Resolution 1855, and would like to speak to it.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1855. Is there any discussion? Alderman Wiltshire?
Thank you. I just want to agree with what the chief said. This is a fair contract. I think it's a win-win, and I hope that you all support it this evening.
Further discussion? Alderman Tenza?
You know, also, just to follow up what the chief said, I mean, I think I probably have, I've dealt with the police department here in Nashville, as well as across the state, different police departments, to follow what the chief said. Our police department here in Nashville is one of the best in the state, if not the nation, well-trained, you know, just a great department, and so, this contract is fair. All the provisions of it are fair, and I assume that everyone here will support that as well.
Further discussion? Alderman Dowd?
Yes, and I'd just like to reiterate that as well. Our police officers here every day are encountering people as we see, and we get the information from the police department on who's been arrested. They put their lives on the line every day, and I think they do an admirable job and deserve to be rewarded for it.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 1855 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-056, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $32,000 from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activity FY '19 Substance Misuse Prevention.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright?
I move for final passage of R. 18-056.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1856. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 1856 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-057, changing the purpose of up to $250,000 of unexpended bond proceeds from three projects, Broad Street Elementary School, Sunset Heights Elementary School, and Lead Street Lighting, to the district-wide middle schools renovation and construction project for funding engineering and architectural services.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18057 by roll call, and like to speak to it.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1857 by roll call. Alderman Dowd?
Yes, and as you may well know, we were given the middle school project from the Board of Education of the Joint Special School Building Committee, and we need to hire an architect and a building construction manager to get the pricing for the various alternatives that will be involved, so that a sound decision can be made before we move forward. So, these are, at least on two of these, other than the LED light, where money's left over, because the former projects were well-managed, and we had money left over. So, we want to repurpose this money to allow us to move forward.
Further discussion? If not, would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alderman Gidge?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
We have 14 yeses.
Motion carries, and R. 1857 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-057, oh, sorry, forgot to turn the page. Second reading of Resolution 18-058, authoring Penachuck Corporation, Penachuck Waterworks Incorporated, and Penachuck East Utility Incorporated to borrow funds from the State of New Hampshire Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund and the State of New Hampshire Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Thank you. I move for final passage of Resolution 1858.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1858. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 1858 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-062, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of up to $650,000 from the Department of Homeland Security into fire grant activity, FY 2017, assistance to firefighters' grants, and authorizing the transfer of up to $65,000 of matching funds from the fiscal year 2018 budget.
Alderman Laws?
I move for final passage of R. 18-62.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1862. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and R. 1862 is adopted. Motion carries and R. 1862 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-063, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $50,000 from the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services Grant Activity, Healthy Homes and Lead Poisoning Case Management.
Alderman Cle.
I move for final passage of R. 18-063.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1863. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and R. 1863 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-064, relative to the acceptance and appropriations of $261,767 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety and Police Grant Activities, FY 2019 Opioid Abuse Reduction Initiative, OARI Grant.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18064.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1864. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and R. 1864 is adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Third reading of Ordinance 18-007, prohibiting placing or blowing yard debris in the street.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to re-refer R. 18007 to the Committee of Infrastructure, and may I speak to my motion?
Motion is to re-refer R. 1807 to the Committee on Infrastructure. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. Those that are familiar, this matter was discussed and vetted, but however, additional information has come up in opinions, particularly from the legal department, and I would like to support me and get it re-referred to our committee so that we can fix it. That would be worthy of our prudence. Thank you.
And further discussion? If not, the motion is to re-refer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and R. 1807 is re-referred to the Infrastructure Committee.
Second reading of Ordinance 18-016, establishing a no-parking zone on the west side of Pine Street.
Alderman Lopez with the jacket.
I would like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18016 with my jacket.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1816. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and R. 1816 is adopted. New business resolutions?
First reading, Resolution 18-065, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $43,456 from the United States Department of Justice into police grant activity, 2017 Justice Assistant Grant, multi-jurisdictional.
Additional sponsors? Alderman, Alderwoman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Gidge, Alderman Dow, Alderwoman Cle, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Karen, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Tenza, Alderwoman Schmidt, and Alderman O'Brien. And R. 1865 will be assigned to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 18-066, relative to addressing possible inequities in sick leave policy for certain unaffiliated employees.
Any additional sponsors? Alderwoman Cle, Alderwoman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly. And R. 1866 will be assigned to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 18-067, designating rail trail as Class B Trail under New Hampshire RSA 231-A.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Gidge, Alderman Dow, Alderwoman Cle, Alderman O'Brien. And R. 1867 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Resolution 18-0068, relative to the re-appropriation of fiscal year FY 2019 escrows.
Any additional sponsors? Alderman Dow, Alderwoman Cle, Alderwoman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Gidge, and Alderman O'Brien. And R. 1868 will be assigned to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution 18-069, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into a contract with BAE for transit services.
Additional sponsors? Alderwoman Wiltshire, Alderman Gidge, Alderwoman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Dow, Alderwoman Cle, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Karen, Alderman Tenza, Alderwoman Schmidt, Alderman O'Brien. And R. 1869 will be assigned to the Finance Committee.
First reading of Resolution 18-070, authorizing the acceptance of a license from BAE over land located on the corner of Canal Street and Nashua Drive for a bus shelter.
Additional sponsors? Alderwoman Wiltshire, Alderman Gidge, Alderwoman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Dow, Alderwoman Cle, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderwoman Schmidt, Alderman O'Brien, and myself. And R. 1870 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Resolution 18-071, relative to the appropriation of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Home Investment Partnership Program funds to neighbor works of southern New Hampshire.
Additional sponsors? Alderwoman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Gidge, Alderman Dow, Alderwoman Cle, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Karen, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Tenza, Alderwoman Schmidt, Alderman O'Brien, and myself. And R. 1871 will be assigned to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 18-0, wait, all right, ordinances?
Yeah. New business ordinances?
First reading of Ordinance 18-019, amending the land use code by adding provisions regarding urban chickens.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Lopez, Alderman Laws, Alderwoman Wiltshire, and Alderwoman Schmidt, and Alderwoman Harriet Gathright. Alderman Kelly, do you have a motion?
I move to accept the first reading of 01819 and assign it to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Nashua City Planning Board, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Tuesday, September 18, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
Motion is to accept the first reading of 01819, assign it to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Nashua City Planning Board, and to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, September 18, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Is there any discussion of that motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
First reading of Ordinance 18-020, prohibiting parking on a portion of the south side of East Pearl Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Gidge. And 01820 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Ordinance 18-021, authorizing the city to lease parking spaces located at the Crown Street Park and Ride.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Gidge, Alderman Dow, Alderwoman Cle, Alderman Laws, Alderwoman Harriet Gathright, and myself. And 01821 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure. Period for general public comment? No one has signed up. Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen? I'll start over here tonight. Anybody? Any remarks? Alderman Dow?
I just wanted to say that I attended the national night out at the Boys and Girls Clubs, as did Alderman Tenza, and it was a very nice event. Of course, the mayor was there. I think that it did a lot. Chief LaVoye and I were part of a group that watched a presentation from DEA to the young kids from, that were there and their families, and it was very, very entertaining and informative. I think more people should have a chance to take in that, that type of presentation. But it, there were a lot of people there, it was well-received, and I just want to congratulate the Police and Fire Department and, and everyone else that was involved, certainly Boys and Girls Club for that evening.
Additional remarks? Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to comment, we had two pieces of legislation relative to how our city handles substance misuse, and I just wanted to remind members of the Board of Aldermen we're far from out of the woods with that. There are still people struggling every day, there are still, fire stations still open, receiving people looking for a better life. And our police are dealing, you know, I can say from firsthand observation, very compassionately with people who are under the influence, making decisions that are, that affect public welfare. It's something we still have a lot of work to do, so I encourage everybody to be familiar with the resources and services available in our city, and I wanted to extend my condolences to the Omera family for their recent loss. There is the Downtown Arts Festival on August 25, Saturday, on Main Street, so I wanted to invite all of the members of the Board of Aldermen to attend, and I wanted to wish our Aldermanic Assistant Patricia happy birthday, or sorry, Sue, happy birthday. I was looking at the, I was looking at the city clerk. So, happy birthday, Sue.
Alderwoman Karen.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mia, for talking about Nashua Goes Back to School. We've been dealing with that before, since 4th of July, so I speak on behalf of Alderman Melissa Gola, who's been working hard on this. It is a week from Thursday, from 5:00 to 6:30. We are looking forward to having a bus there that is going to talk about safety on school buses, and you're going to be able to have your picture taken. We're really excited about that. The Telegraph is putting together several articles concerning Nashua Goes Back to School. One is to celebrate all the sponsors over the past 13 years who have participated. They're also doing something with all the schools, all the principals that have been part of that, and also all the volunteers who have helped out. And if you want to see some exciting, hard-working people, is to come on Wednesday, when RSVP is there, and they bag almost 1,700 bags with supplies in less than three hours. We have students from Penachuck Junior High School who'll be there. We also have the Pokemon Group that is sending three or four people, and we also have members of the Lions Club who'll also be helping out that day. And we're looking forward to it being a nice day on Thursday so that everyone can come down and have a good time. Thank you. And oh, happy birthday, Susan.
Additional remarks? Alderman Wiltshire.
Thank you. I just wanted to let the citizens know that the National Police Department is starting their 30th Citizens Academy. You can register by calling Ed Licious at 594-3544. The deadline to register for that is August 30.
Any additional remarks? Alderman Gidge.
Yes, my wife broke her hip, and then she ended up in the hospital with nine stitches in her finger, but she also did something else. Front-page union leader, and I mean, really, the top Nashville artist's wife foils international scam. So, she's pretty protective of myself and the artist, but I thought that was pretty neat.
I, I think Sue may have thought she was going to escape notice when I didn't post anything on her Facebook page, but that was deliberate to give me the element of surprise, which Alderman Lopez with the jacket has told. Happy birthday, Sue.
Thank you very much.
Committee announcements? Alderman Jettie?
Yes, although I'm very anxious to find out what an urban chicken is. The slicker fast-talking chicken as opposed to the rural farm slow-talking chickens.
I'm, I'm sure over in the children's section of the library they can help you out.
Melissa Golia has asked me to announce that the Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting of August 21st has been canceled and rescheduled to September 4 at 7:00 PM here in the Aldermanic Chambers.
Other announcements? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure, Wednesday, August 22, 7:00 PM. See you there.
Any other business? Is there a motion? Alderwoman Wiltshire.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:15.